It's seven, seven o'clock. I will call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and I am going to recognize Selectman Muscat will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam. All right, I doubt with all members of the Board of Selectmen here present, good night. I'd like to ask for a motion to take out of order Agenda Item 9A and continue discussion on our budget workshop items.
Selectman Nordele will move that.
Is there a second?
Oh, go ahead. I can't wait to work in person again.
Made by Charlie, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I think all members are voting in the affirmative. Okay, so, Amy.
So, the last thing we have is revenue.
Yep.
So, the analysis that got sent today, sorry, it didn't open like it should have. But basically, the state has told us we're going to get the same revenue, so we have no changes there. We don't have any significant changes in any of our departments. So really, the only increase we have is the grand list growth at our current mill rate, which is about $900,000 of an increase in revenue, leaving the mill rate at 34.5% and collection at 98.5%.
So Charlie, I'm not sure if you were able to, if you were able to view this document or not. I know you struggled on your phone with it, but we, we're, we can come back to this when we do our actual workshop two weeks from tonight on the budget making process with any questions that you might have. But I mean, Amy provided a five-year trend across, across departments and funds. One of the things. So Amy, is all this general fund? Thank you.
Yes. So one of the questions the other night was the park and rec. And so you'll see in the park and rec department, the things that are covered are there are the food and beverage at the park, the pavilion rental, swim lessons, season tickets and park emissions. Those are the things that the expenses relating to them are paid out of the general fund. So those are the things that are in the general fund. Things like camp that they run and the expenses relating to camp all come under their program account. So basically, anything, what's that?
Non-general Fund account.
Right. So this is all general fund revenue and this is what makes up our $42 million budget. And as you see, the overall number at the very bottom shows that the revenue would be an increase of 2.23% currently with just the tax having the only change.
So again, Charlie, I know you had some, some, I think, specific questions on this, but we can come back to this either on Tuesday evening or two weeks from tonight. Okay?
And I'll send it in Excel. That's not a CSV, so that you guys can play with it if you want.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments on any of the presentations this evening? Any, anything people want for follow-up? Okay, so we're going to have one more presentations workshop, which will be next Tuesday. I don't have the agenda in front of me offhand, but it's effectively going to be any, any department under our purview that we have not yet heard. I can't offhand think of what they are, but, and then you guys will have about a week and a half to come up with any questions or comments or requests for additional information that you want. And then my intention is two weeks from tonight, we will actually make our edits and, and changes to my budget presentation. So far, what you've heard has, has been in almost all cases what the department heads have requested. So two weeks from tonight, I'll walk through any changes that I made in my, in my recommendation that I filed with the clerk, which is the document that we'll, we'll be making changes off of. Amy will have the Excel sheet ready for us to play with on that evening. We will be back in person that evening. And so we can either make adjustments up or down based on my budget submission and based on the workshops that, that we've been sitting through. Sound like a plan? Okay.
Yeah, Jason, just a reminder, um, I have previous commitment on the 22nd. If I'm at all able to hop on, on the way home from New York, I'll do that. But I'm going to be on a train, so I don't know how that's going to work. So.
So what we have on, I'm going top, top of mind here, but we have a couple of councils and commissions, CIP. That might be it. Oh, libraries.
Libraries.
And debt service. Okay, so I'm going to put this aside. We'll take up the regular call of the agenda and move on to public participation. So this is the first opportunity for the general public to address members of the Board of Selectmen. There will be another one later on this evening. Is there anybody on the call who, who would like to address members of the board? Seeing us, there will be another opportunity later in the, in the agenda. We have a couple of communications that I want to share. First is a request from the police union that we allocate some amount specified from our ARPA award for hazard pay for frontline employees. That was received on February 10th. The next one, and this was a, I alluded to this at our last meeting. This is another vegetation management strategy that's required to be submitted to us under the general statutes. This one comes from the folks who own and operate the rail line that actually runs right behind Town Hall and through the Windsorville and Melrose sections of town. If you're interested, you can compare and contrast that to the strategy put forward by the Connecticut Trolley Museum folks. The third one is a public hearing notice. This is the, I think both of them are here. Yeah. So we, as part of our CDBG grant, we need to have a public hearing on the commencement of the project. Needs to be noticed twice. So the notices for the hearing are in front of you. It will, so on March 3rd, we're going to have a public hearing on the CDBG grant award. We're going to have a public hearing on the Broadbrook Fire Department's budget submission, and we're going to be working on our own budget recommendation. So it's going to be a little all over the place, but it's just the way the calendar has fallen in terms of due dates and charter provisions and the like. So I'm just giving you a little fore, forewarning that it's going to be a little different than usual. But the good news is we'll be back in person. So things seem to move a little bit smoother that way. And the last one was a thank you note submitted to us by Lion Barbara for the use of Town Hall and Town Hall Annex as collection points for goods to be sent to victims of the tornadoes in Kentucky. Barbara, thank you for the kind note.
You were kind to let us use it, and we hope we didn't interfere with any business going on.
Not at all. It's your building too. Okay, so we've completed Agenda Item 9A. I'd like to take up, well, we'll just go in order, I guess. So on, as you know, on February 4th, February 4th was Rand Stanley's last day with us as the building official. On the morning of February 7th, I got an email from Ginny Powers, the longtime building clerk, notifying us of her intention to retire effective that day. So the department was left staffed by just one half-time person, actually a part-time person, not even half-time. She has stepped up in a pretty big way. Now, our part-time employees have their hours capped on a per-year basis. They can't exceed more than 1,000 hours a year, otherwise they, they trigger requirements for benefits eligibility, pension investments, that type of thing. And so what we do is when somebody hits that, that 1,000-hour mark, they're done for the calendar year, and, and then we'll bring them back sometime in the ensuing calendar year. This is done, DPW does this with, with certainly one guy who's fantastic, and from time to time, they're able to do it with a second person. Because Lori Coulter is the employee that, that is the part-time clerk in the building department now. Because she is working many more hours than she typically does, and because that will effectively limit her time with us in that role, and because she's the only person there with any institutional knowledge at all to keep the, the flow of business and permits flowing, I'd like the board to consider adjusting her part-time salary while, while she's in that elevated capacity to make up the difference. And I'd like that to be changed to, hang on a second, I'll tell you specifically. I'd like to up her at $27.55 an hour effective February 7th. But in order to do that, I need the board's permission. So she's the only employee we have right now. She's doing a great job. The, the coverage that we've arranged from South Windsor have raved about her organization and understanding of what's going on there. And quite honestly, we are in big trouble without her. So I'd like to bump her up from her current salary, which I think is 1780, up to 2755.
2755?
Yep. So that's my ask. I'm happy to have conversations about it.
Jason, I'm sorry. Is that, is that permanent or is that just temporary increase?
While she's working on the additional hours.
While she's doing the additional hours, okay.
On mute. How does this affect us union-wise? Is there any concerns?
Well, it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect us union-wise at all. The job that she is effectively covering is, is posted and open. We're in the union notification period. In the contract, anybody who's in the bargaining unit has, has a period of time to indicate their interest. And then it's going to take us a little bit of time to do the recruitment. If there isn't a bargaining unit employee who's interested, there's good, it'll take some time to do the public recruitment. And then depending on who the candidate is that ultimately gets hired, they would need to have some sort of a notice, presumably some sort of a notice period for a current employer and the like. So bottom line is we have an emergency need now. And we have the funding for it. The 2755 number come, just so you know, that comes from the current contractual salary for the previous building clerk, less the 10% that the contract would require us to do if Lori were to fill that position on a permanent basis. So basically, I'm not doing anything overt or around the terms of the contract. I'm just filling a need, making sure that we have, we can recognize somebody who's stepping up while we're trying to fill our, our contractual obligations.
I'm, I'll make a motion that we increase the part-time building clerk's salary from $17.80 to $27.55 until the additional hours are no longer necessary.
Really, until the permanent position is filled?
I'll correct that until a permanent position is filled.
Thank you for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you for that. Any, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it. I know Lori appreciates it. It's nice to be able to recognize somebody when they're stepping up, and she is. Okay. So that brings us on to Agenda Item 9C. This is, as we talked about, and you authorized me to enter into at our last meeting. This is an agreement for professional services between the town of East Windsor and the town of South Windsor for building inspection services. It's a short-term MOU that expires on June 30th of this year. And it's been, it's been executed. You guys authorized me to sign it. But I also agreed that I would bring back the final version to you so you could see it. And that we could hopefully get a vote of the board, non-pro-tongue. I know one legal phrase, just the one. Any questions or comments about the MOU? Could I have a motion to ratify?
You want that in the motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion to ratify the agreement for professional service between the town of East Windsor and the town of South Windsor for building inspection services as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Everyone say hi to Mrs. Baker. How are you?
How you doing?
It's okay to have crashers. Usually my kids are doing it.
Are you done?
No.
No.
Jason, I just want, I just want to say thank you for taking the extra steps necessary to handle that emergency that surfaced in that department before the date was done, we're already on it. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. That is certainly a, a need for the town to, to have coverage there. I mean, that is a forward-facing economic development driving department. I, I had expected the, the former permitting clerk to go shortly after Rand left. I did not expect that that would be, you know, within hours and with only hours' notice. So that was disappointing, but also challenging. Okay, at our last meeting, we had had a conversation around how, how or if we would decide to fly flags on town property other than government-issue flags. So at your request, I asked the town attorney to do some research. I forwarded that on to you. As you can see, there are a couple of different approaches that were included. The long and short of it from the town attorney was that we probably should have some sort of a policy. As it stands, we do not. So you can take, you can provide feedback on the policies that were provided. Or, you know, we can make up something else, but you have now some information in, in terms of how other towns are making decisions.
So it's really.
Any thoughts on what you have? Al?
Sorry, I've got a lag, so if I'm stepping on anybody, sorry about that. I'm having Cox cable tonight. Um, but anyway, after we had our discussion last time, this kind of will show you what a loser I am, but I was watching C-SPAN. And specifically, I was spent about three and a half hours listening to the current Supreme Court arguments. And which one of them was the shirt left versus Boston, which ended up in the, in your packet tonight. And so it was, you know, it was pretty lightning about just how messy this gets. And Boston did not have a policy. And they denied, basically what it came up to down to is they denied a religious organization on a flagpole that they use for various different reasons. But, you know, it's not the flagpole that they put the US flag on, or the Boston flag, or the POW flag, the, the specific government speech flags, right? But it was another flag that they consider government speech, but they would put various different flags on. But anyway, they denied under the Establishment Clause, a religious organization, and that ended them up in front of the Supreme Court. Well, I'll tell you, a majority from the arguments that were, or the questions that were made by the justices, a majority of the justices even think the Establishment Clause was the reason to deny. So it'll be interesting how that works out, but you know, long and short of it is, I think, you know, South Windsor, Bloomfield, looks like they copied each other, maybe Berlin too. I think those all look good. The, and they all have the Establishment Clause denial in them. Who knows if that'll even stand up after this case that's in the Supreme Court, but I think we should go with one of them. Or a variation of that. But they basically all have, all the ones that have a policy, they all have that five things that you can't have kind of thing. And, and I think we just easy, easy enough to go with those.
Any other thoughts?
I agree with the policy as stated by Alan. I think we discussed some of that anyways already.
So what it boils down to, the way I read it, is it's government speech. And, you know, we could have a separate flagpole. We could designate a flagpole. We could say what we're going to do with the flagpoles we have, whatever. But it's government speech, and therefore, if we want to deny something that we don't want to speak as government, so if somebody wanted to fly the Confederate flag, we'd say as government, as the government, we're not doing that. We'll, we like this, we like that, but we don't like that. And, and that's perfectly legal. And, and so as long as you have a policy, where, where Boston got in trouble is they didn't even have a policy. And they just kind of flew off the side of the seat of their pants with the Establishment Clause, which may or may not hold up itself, but that's not the question in front of the court. Court is, did you have a poll? If you have a policy, it is what it is. You don't like.
Charlie, Sarah, any thoughts?
I agree that we need to have a policy. But go, I'm kind of where Marie was at the previous meeting, that the only flags that should be flown are like the State of Connecticut flag, the American flag, things of that nature. I think you're kind of opening a can of worms. I mean, I understand you're saying what the government wants to speak, but that can be somewhat left up to opinion as well, and it can still, my views might be different from your views, and I think it could, you know, lead to opening a can of worms, per se. So, I mean, I would like to kind of sit on this a little bit and think about it a little more. But I do agree that we need to have a policy.
I, I agree with your sentiments completely. Charlie?
Yeah, I, I kind of feel the same. It's, it's not, I, I think it's a touchy situation, no matter which way you go with it. I think sticking to what's there and what's expected is where we should continue to go. If a separate flagpole was erected for such a thing, then I would be okay with that. And, but then still, a policy would have to be in place.
So next steps, next steps, do you want me to adapt one of the policies in the packet for us to consider at the next meeting? Do you want me to just list this as an unfinished business item? And, and we'll keep them all active? What's your pleasure here?
That would be my, my desire.
Which one? I gave you choices.
Sorry. To, to, to establish a policy, you know, and keep this as an open item.
So you're, so I understand you. What you're saying is you want, you would like me to adopt one of these for consideration and place that on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I guess I would just, and we can continue discussing this after we see a draft policy, but for, for myself, I don't think that we should be, as government, we should be afraid to speak because we're afraid of what we might not want to speak about, right? So the can of worms argument for me, I think as government, we should be able to stand up for, you know, if it's, you know, we'll just take the, the current topic, the whole reason why we're talking about this Black History Month. If they, you know, if we want to say, yeah, you know, we're cool with that affinity, I think we should, we should be able to, you know, stand up and say that. Now, I do think that those flags should be on a separate flagpole, because I don't think that, I, I think that the, the respect that is due, the national flag and the state flag, and the few others that have kind of passed muster should not be modified. But so I, I, you know, I do think that we should stand for something every now and then, and not be afraid to stand for something every now and then. And to not stand for something, I, I think it's equally, it's equally important to say, no, we're not standing for that, and here's why, right? Like, so I think the can of worms needs to be opened and dissected every now and then.
It's very Jeffersonian of you.
He's my favorite, no matter what anybody says about him.
You know, he wore slippers all the time, right?
Hey, you know what? If I could wear slippers all the time, I would. Isn't that the fact?
So I'll adapt one of these, and then we can, we can play with it. I'll, I'll circulate it in a, well, it'll be available in the packet, and then we'll track, change it and work it out. Okay, so we are on to 9E, Discussion of Eminent Domain Process Regarding the MMCT Property. I had hoped to have the town attorney here to actually walk us through the process, but there was a scheduling issue, so I'm going to ask that we postpone that. And so you're aware, I may call a special meeting on that specifically for that purpose, because it is a, it, it deserves its own attention and not to be commingled in an otherwise crowded agenda. So could I have a motion to postpone, please?
I'll make a motion to postpone the discussion about eminent domain process regarding MMCT property.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item is postponed. We are on to tax refunds.
Selectman Muscat will move to approve the tax refunds totaling $2,434.68.
Is there a second?
We'll reduce the second.
Made, made and seconded. You guys will notice that Patty made notes on each of the itemized refunds with what the purpose for the refund is. This is something that you guys had asked for at the last meeting. Is this format, does this pass muster, or are you looking for something more comprehensive?
No, that's what I was looking for.
Okay. Then a motion has been made and seconded. There's no further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Selectmen's reports. I don't have too, too much. I'm actually going to write something up later that might be a little bit more comprehensive. I just want to touch base on four things that I've been working on or that have happened over the last couple of weeks. The first, I mentioned that we have a new assistant planner. Danielle Miller comes to us with a master's in urban planning from Louisiana. She spent the last few years of her career working in a town called Gretna, Louisiana. She's got an interest in environmental issues. She's got a master's in urban planning. Gretna is a town similar in size and population to the town of East Windsor. Couple thousand people, different, but pretty close. When we did her reference checks, a number of her references asked if they could please have her back. So she completes, largely completes a rebuild that's going to happen in the planning department staff. I think that it is a very strong department now. She's hit the ground running. So I, when you get a chance, So I, when you get a chance, welcome her. I'm very excited to have her on board, and I know Ruth is too. I mentioned that there have been some changes in the building department. Within two working days, both the longtime building official and the building clerk left municipal service. One resigned, the other one retired. So there was a fair amount of scrambling last week to figure out what the solution was to both of those things long-term. I want to thank this board for their support during that process, and also for their recognition of the part-time building clerk and the, the way in which she stepped up. I know she will appreciate that. As part of the supervisor's contract that was adopted in July, performance evaluations were part of the, the new contract language, as well as a merit component based on performance. So shortly after ratification of that contract, I sat with all of the supervisor union members who are my direct reports, and we jointly established goals together, performance measures against which they would be measured over the course of the year. I don't think it's fair to simply set a goal and then not revisit it. So over the last two weeks, I've met with each of my direct reports about the goals that they have set, to just check in and see how they're coming with them, what roadblocks are in the way, how can I be supportive of them accomplishing what they set out to do, what they see for a timeline, because performance evaluations are not supposed to be a negative thing. They're supposed to be a communications tool. So I wanted to make sure that we're using that as a communications tool. And I have to say, I've been pretty pleased with, with the results that I've heard from, from the folks at least who are my direct reports so far. That will be, I think, very informative as we get to the tail end of the fiscal year where we actually do the evaluation process. But I just wanted you guys to know that that was something different that was built into this contract. It was, it was done for an intended purpose, and I think that it's working. So hopefully, when we get to the review period, I'll be able to share the accomplishments that that goal setting has led to with the board. Lastly, this is another lingering issue that's lingered for, I'll say several years, but it's probably longer than that. There, the folks who are on the Scout Hall Building Committee have an interest in revisiting certain terms of their lease. So I have had a preliminary meeting with them about what exactly their, their concerns and their issue may be. The town attorney is doing a review of the lease at Scout Hall, and we're going to be meeting again next week to talk about what their, what the results of Josh's assessment of, of the lease is, as well as what their goals are. Once we, once I have an understanding of what it is they're asking for, if there is an amendment to the lease, that will, that will be coming back to the Board of Selectmen for you guys to, to review, modify, and ultimately decide. So those are the things that I have. There's more going on, but I didn't have, I didn't have time with the workshop tonight to actually sit down and write out my report as I typically do, so I'll be doing that later on. Um, Marie?
Yeah, the only thing I had is Police Commission met on February ninth. It was a very short meeting because they went into a executive session. But the one thing of, um, what I would consider some value out of that meeting was Bob Leach took it upon himself to bring a proposal to the commission in regards to certification of weapons training. He joined the Hartford Gun Club, and he talked with the owners of that club, and they're lying on Mondays and Tuesdays for a fee of only fifteen hundred dollars for East Windsor to utilize that facility for training. So the police chief now, because he wasn't at that meeting, has indicated a few days ago that he is looking into that, and hopefully they'll come up with some kind of agreement moving forward. So I just spoke that out, and that's all I got.
Thank you, ma'am. Charlie?
Okay, on February seventh, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire Commissioners Meeting. The new aerial pumper truck has now been put into service. They finally got all the equipment needed to stock that truck and get it on the road. The department reported sixty-five calls during the month of January. The department's financial audit has been completed with no significant findings for last year's budget. The budget for twenty-two, twenty-three was discussed, but not yet finalized. And the, the commission is pushing for a zero mill rate increase for, for that budget. The commissioner also discussed unequal taxation that still exists between the taxpayers of Warehouse Point and Broadbrook, and what is paid for by the whole town for the fire department on the Broadbrook side. It was discussed on how the town could possibly separate these costs and effectively make these costs equal for both sides of town. On February ninth, I attended the Board of Education meeting, the Zoom. The East Windsor Middle School did a presentation on activities they do with the kids and current teaching methods. The students made Valentine's cards that were distributed to people at the senior center and the area nursing homes again this year. Another presentation was given on illustrative math. In this program, students are given a math problem, and then they break into groups and discuss how they, they work on the problem together. In this instance, the teacher acts more as a facilitator and a moderator while the students work out ways to solve the problem. In short, it is kind of like debate class with the debating subject being a math problem. Policy updates were made and voted on for alcohol, drugs, and tobacco-free workplace, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, basic construction program, and the FAFSA completion program. The board discussed the possibility that there could be changes upcoming in the mask mandates, and how they will just make decisions whether to continue or drop the mask mandates in East Windsor schools. I do know that since then, they have put out a survey to school parents asking their opinion on the mask mandate and what they're comfortable with as far as a change, so anyone can get that filled out and back to them. The board is also continuing budget workshops in preparation for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Enrollment in the East Windsor school system shows a loss of one student from the elementary school and gained one student in the high school. Current enrollment still stands at one thousand twenty-six students. On February fifteenth, I attended a Board of Selectmen budget workshop in which we discuss social services, parks and wrecks, elderly commission, public works, sanitation, town property, roads, IT, building commission, police, and emergency management. Well, we got a lot in that night. On February sixteenth, I attended the Board of Finance meeting. The audit is expected to be completed very soon, either today or tomorrow, I think is what they were saying. A request from the Board of Selectmen was tabled upon explanation as to why the request to fund a CIP item ahead of other CIP items could not really be answered. So they tabled that decision to transfer those funds. They also discussed their budget expectations and schedule. Overwhelmingly, the board was in agreement that they wished more people participated and attended the budget process, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Al?
Okay, so thank you. Um, so I attended the Broadbrook Fire Department Commission meeting, but to be honest with you, they were having some technical issues with their sound system, and it was extremely hard to make haggar tales of anything they were saying. Did get it cleared up towards the end, but both Peg and I were kind of scratching our hags. It was a very quick meeting, I can tell you that, and it didn't seem like there was much out of the ordinary. So not much to say there. Planning and zoning commission had a pretty light schedule again, but there was one probably important thing that we should probably be aware of that came out of that. They are reviewing a new bond policy, and I did have a couple suggested edits for them, but most specifically, the way that, you know, the last part of the bond's policy specifies, you know, how this policy be, could be modified, and, and the way it currently reads that the commission may consult the town's finance department, commission attorney, or other professional staff, and I suggested that if there is any variance from this policy, that it actually needs to be signed off by the, by the finance department and the first selectman, and it's up to the first selectman if he wants to share it with, with the Board of Selectmen, but just because of the history of this, and if you obviously remember, you know, when we first took office in our first terms currently, you know, there was a, it was a lot of outstanding issues, and the town has been, had some troubles with getting leashing, you know, of roads without town laughing to actually kick in. So I think until we get on our feet with this and make sure that we really know what we're doing, that, that any changes from the final adopted policy, which I think was fairly good, needs to be, needs to be actual signed off by people that have some skin in the game, and the first selectman is ultimately answerable to the, to the taxpayers, who are the ones that had to foot the bill for the problems that we've had in the past. So I really strongly feel like there should be some, some additional checks there. So I, I did make that suggestion, and I just wanted to bring it up here to highlight it further. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, sir. That is an important policy that they're working on. Sarah?
Okay, on February eighth, the Arts and Culture Commission met via Zoom. The commission received only one submission for their logo contest, and they have decided to extend the deadline to the end of March to encourage additional participation. The commission obtained six wooden bunnies from the Parks and Recreation Department that they will be refurbishing. One will be featured at the Bunny Breakfast on April ninth as a selfie board. There was discussion of a potential fundraising opportunity for the other bunnies, and the commission will explore the option of having businesses advertise on them. The commission is compiling an artist's bank, which is the lists of local artists ranging from pottery to painting that the commission can reach out to for various events that they are planning. There was discussion of partnering with the summer concert series this year and incorporating craft shows. Pending funding approval, a few potential projects on the horizon include wrapping approximately ten telephone boxes around town with photos from the East Windsor Historical Society, a solar festival possibly including a spin on dinosaur fossils. And they were talking about two potential mural sites in the Warehouse Point section of town. And this, there is still room for new members, so if you are interested, please fill out an application and return it to the first selectman's office, and that is all I have.
Thank you. If you're going to post this on social media later, can you take out the references to the Bunny Breakfast? We do not yet have a cosponsor on that, although we, we may this evening. I just haven't heard yet.
Sure.
Okay, public participation. This is public second and final opportunity to address the Board of Selectmen. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, we will have an executive session. It will be just the five of us. It is unlikely that there will be any action afterwards. Can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
I'll move that we go into executive session at seven forty-three.
Okay.
Made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? We are in executive session at seven forty-four. It is eight twenty-four. We're out of executive session. With no further business to come before the board, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. It's non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned at eight twenty-four. Everybody have a good night.